Ladies and gentlemen, welcome Township of Howell's Planning Board for Thursday, October 19th. Opening statement, please, Eileen.
I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 6, 2017, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Star Ledger and the Tri-Town News. Second, on January 6, 2017, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the Clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on January 6, 2017, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Former Mayor Gatto?
Present.
I have not heard from Mr. Husser. Chief Kudrick?
I did, I did. He's work. He will not be here today.
Okay, thank you. Chief Kudrick?
Present.
Mr. Nash?
Present.
Mr. Russo?
Here.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Here.
Mr. French?
Here.
Mr. Boyle?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Here.
Mayor Berger may be late. Chairman Schneider?
Here.
You have a quorum.
If you want to get Mr. Boyle?
Yeah, probably.
Please stand for the Pledge of Regents. At a moment of silence. Pray for those people still having disaster problems and the victims of Las Vegas. Chief?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion to approve the minutes of our regular meeting of August 17th. Eligible voters are: Former Mayor Gatto, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Nash, Russo, French, and myself.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the August 17th, 2017 meeting.
Second?
I will second it.
Roll call, please.
Former Mayor Gatto?
Uh, yes, sorry.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Nash?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. French?
Yes.
And Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Motion for the regular minutes of the regular meeting, September 7th. Eligible voters are: Mr. Russo, Tannenhouse, French, and myself.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
That's fine.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. French?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, October 5th, 2017. Eligible voters are: Chief Kudrick, Mr. Tannenhouse, French, Boyle, and myself.
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Who moved that?
Chief, second.
You're not eligible, Tommy. So I need a first?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Any correspondence, Eileen?
Yes, I have a letter from Michael Butler. He's the attorney for L&amp;L Paving. He asked that the application which is scheduled for this evening be carried to the Board's November 2nd, 2017 meeting without further notice to the public. He also granted the Board an extension of time to act on the application until November 30th, 2017.
Counselor?
The application of L&amp;L Paving Company Incorporated, case number SP-1026, be carried to the Board's November 2nd, 2017 meeting, 7 o'clock here in the main meeting room at Town Hall. There will be no further notice to property owners.
And the only other piece of correspondence, I left a list of meeting dates for 2018 with everybody. If you can kind of just look it over, see what you think. There are two dates that are problems. One is May the 3rd, which is the National Day of Prayer. In the last two years, we had problems in how to cancel our meetings because of it. The other one is for the Master Plan Subcommittee. Their date falls on Thanksgiving, so they need an alternate date. So, thank you, and that's it.
We have a couple of resolutions. The first one is case number SP-1028 Autozone Northeast LLC, resolution granting final major site plan. Eligible voters are: Mr. Nash, Russo, French, and myself. Have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to memorialize case number SP-1028, granting final major site plan.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
I'm sorry, who seconded? Mr. French?
I did.
Thank you. Mr. Nash?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. French?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, the next one, Hussein, that one we did at our last meeting, that'll be done for the next meeting.
Thank you. So that's it. Now, we have a master plan hearing, an amendment to the parks recreation, open space element of the master plan. This is a public hearing. It's an amendment to the parks recreation, open space element of the master plan as prepared by CME Associates. The hearing was scheduled for May 18th, when it was carried to June 15th, with no further notice. June 15th, master plan hearing for the amendment to the parks recreation and open space element of the master plan was carried to August 3rd with no further notice. On August 3rd, the master plan hearing for this amendment was carried to September 7th with no further notice. And on September 7th, it was carried to October 5th. The public hearing was held on October 5th with public comment, but the vote was deferred to this evening. Eligible voters are: Chief Kudrick, Mr. Tannenhouse, Mr. French, Mr. Boyle, and myself. Counselor, you want to?
Sure. Mr. Chair, that's a very accurate history of the chronology of the proposed element. As you stated at the last hearing, we did take testimony from our planner at that time, and the Board asked questions. It was open to the public, at which time our planner was cross-examined by members of the public. Members of the public made statements and provided their own testimony. At that time, the Board deferred and carried the matter for a final vote so that our planner could review some of the issues that had been raised, most particularly the accuracy of the lots that were included and some issues concerning the landfill and the size of the Bear Swamp. So, in the meantime, our planner has done that. We've also received some additional correspondence, which have been made part of the record. Received a letter from Mr. Johnson, and we also received an email with some attachments from Ms. Niskovich. So those are all part of the record for the master plan, and they were considered by our planner and professionals. So the sole purpose tonight, Mr. Chairman, is that our planner will discuss any revisions that were made to the plan since the last hearing, and also to address any of those issues that were outstanding. The Board can then, must then, open to the public only for any revisions that have been made. We've had our public comment with regard to everything else. This would be only for any revisions that were made from the last hearing to this hearing. Board, of course, can ask any questions it wishes of the professionals, and then we would take a vote. So with that, Mr. Chair, I would turn it to Mr. Vandercoy to provide an update of any of the revisions that were made, and also to address those particular issues.
Okay. Thank you. The revisions that were made were mostly non-substantive grammatical in nature. The one key substantive revision that was made related to the recommendations set forth on page 58, item 8. The recommendation originally was to create a year-round recreation department to assist and track maintenance requirements of the existing park facilities. It's been amended to state the following: In order to be more cost-effective, it is suggested that a year-round recreation division under the Department of Public Works be created to assist and track maintenance requirements of the existing park facilities.
Mr. Vandercoy, you described it as substantive in an amendment, but I think what you were actually saying was those were changes that were not grammatical in nature. From my legal standpoint, I don't find that the change from a recreation department to a recreation division is something we would call substantive under the law. I don't think it's a significant change. It's just, you know, some verbiage. And I also would just call it more of a revision. It's not an amendment to the plan. So I think that it wouldn't require a new notice or new publication of the document.
Thank you. I would agree, it's very minor in nature. And, yeah, in addition to that, I mean, we went through and, you know, we went through all the comments received. We made all the different grammatical changes and formatting changes that were requested, and that's essentially all the changes that were made to date.
Yeah, so, Mr. Vandercoy, just in addition to the changes, some additional testimony on a few of the issues that were raised at the previous hearing. The first being the inclusion of the landfill site. If you could just provide some additional testimony as to why that property is included in this plan element.
Sure. My understanding is that it's included, just to recognize that it is an open space area that exists, approximately 619 acres comprised of 10 contiguous parcels. And what the master plan element states is that, given the historic use of the property as a landfill, the area should be explored with extensive research and consideration pertaining to potential environmental issues on site. And in my experience, you know, with public properties, there are different state programs where funding can be utilized. One is the Hazardous Discharge Site Remediation Fund to help clean up properties such as this. And having it recognized, in particular for open space, is one of the primary uses for that funding as an end use. It's actually one of the more appropriate uses that you could identify property for in order to qualify for that funding, so that's an added benefit.
So, just to recap the significance of it being in the document, number one, the inclusion of that parcel or parcels in this document does not mean that the town is acquiring it, has an intent to acquire it in the near future. All it does is reserve the right of the township to explore acquisition at some future date.
That's correct.
And then it allows, if that decision is made at some point, it allows the town to pursue public funding in order to help remediate any possible contamination.
That's correct.
And I can just tell you, you know, as municipal attorney, that that process, you would not close on a piece of property like this until Phase 1, Phase 2, and LSRP was out there, and there was abundantly clear that the property you're purchasing, you know, was clean, or there was a plan to clean it up. But all that this does, the inclusion of this property, is keep all of the maximum number of options available for the town to pursue it if it wants to, and if it does, to allow the town to apply and obtain public funding in that pursuit. So I don't want anyone to feel that that inclusion means that the town is doing anything right now, or that it triggers anything necessarily right now, because it doesn't. That's a whole other process, and it's a public process. So that just keeps options open. The second thing, Peter, is there was some discussion at the last meeting regarding the actual size of the Bear Swamp area. I think there was some concern that there might have been approximately 200 acres of that area that was not recognized. And I just want to ask you a couple of questions about that. There's no state document that recognizes what the boundaries of the Bear Swamp area is, is there?
No. I mean, we did extensive research online, you know, both at the state, county level. We also communicated with township administration, and we were not able to locate a clearly-defined official map for the Bear Swamp natural area.
Okay. So aside from the fact that that's what we like to call it, and it has significance and some history behind it for us, in terms of the DEP, does the DEP, for lack of a better word, do they care what we call it, or do they just care that it is identified on our plan by lot and block?
For the purposes of, you know, open space funding and DEP's requirements, all that really is required is that it be identified by lot and block or on mapping as it is within this master plan element.
So the other 200 or so acres, you have received information from various sources, most recently the email and attachments from Ms. Niskovich identifying other lots and blocks. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Those lots and blocks were not part of what you identified or your firm identified as the Bear Swamp area in this plan, correct?
Correct.
But they exist on the mapping that's in the plan?
That is correct. They're all depicted.
Right. So we've captured all of those lots and blocks, it's just that we're not necessarily calling those lots and blocks the Bear Swamp area.
That's correct.
So the only thing at issue is what we're calling it, not that it's in the plan or that we missed lots.
Correct.
And for purposes of communicating with the DEP, getting funding from the DEP, making sure that we're eligible for all state programs, the inclusion of those lots and blocks either specifically or on the mapping is what is important. There's no significance in what we call it.
Correct.
Okay. So I think, you know, that there may have been some confusion, but through the extra two weeks that we took, we were able to understand where these lots and blocks are and that they weren't missed. It's just a matter of what they're called, and for purposes of what the town needs from the state, it's not a factor in terms of what it's called. So, Mr. Chair, I don't know if there were any other open issues from the previous hearing, you know, if the Board has any questions. We're certainly available.
Okay. So before I open it to the public on these revisions, does anybody from the Board have anything to?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just wanted to, I wasn't here last meeting, and I apologize. I do want to thank the team that helped put this together. A lot of volunteer hours went into this. I want to thank the professionals who played a huge role in this, and I think this is a great addition to the master plan. I'm proud of it. I'm excited to introduce it.
Could you name the members of your subcommittee that did that?
Mr. Brian Tannenhouse and Mr. Robert Nash, and also the prior Subcommittee as well. I know Mr. Tom Boyle was on that. He took a lot of the pictures that you see in the element. Ken, I think you were on there too, were you?
No.
No?
Mr. Johnson.
And Mr. Steve Johnson, who's in the audience today. Again, a lot of work went into this, and I'm proud to introduce it.
Very good, Mr. Chairman. So at this time, I'll open this to the public. If there's anybody that would like to comment on the revisions only, please step forward. Seeing none, close the public portion.
Hey, Mr. Chair, then, the only thing left is if there's any motion to approve or motion not to approve.
Okay, so, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the master plan as presented.
The eligible voters are: Chief Kudrick, Mr. Tannenhouse, French, Boyle, and myself.
Do you have a second? I'll second.
We need it first, because Mr. Nash wasn't eligible.
Oh, then I'll put a motion on to approve the master plan.
I'll second it, then.
Roll call, please.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
And Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Chairman, if I may, just on behalf of the council, I would like to thank the Planning Board Subcommittee for this element. This document, although not policy, will help, you know, guide this council and future councils on a very important aspect of this town, recreation and open space. I know it's near and dear to many of our hearts, so this is a great document. Good job by all, past and present members, and I think that's about it, Chairman.
Thank you.
Good job by all.
I'd like to just add that our past planner, Jennifer Bean, and our new planner, Mika from CME, I wanted to thank them also on the record. Thank you. First application before the Board is case number SP-1032, Brian Hagerty. This is a preliminary and final major site plan. It's an application of Brian Hagerty, applicant and owner seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval to construct a 4,400-square-foot building with two small offices and garages and a parking lot with 21 spaces, premises notice block 185, lot 1300, Route 33. Application originally scheduled for August 3rd and after some testimony placed on the record, carried to September 14th with no further notice. September 14th, application was carried to October 5th with no further notice. October 5th, this application was carried to the 19th with no further notice. The expiration date is October 31st. Eligible voters are: Mr. Nash, Former Mayor Gatto, Mr. Russo, French, Boyle, Deputy Mayor Nacastro, and myself. Counselor?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Todd Cohen, attorney for the applicant Brian Hagerty, who was also here and was sworn at the last meeting, and Mr. Richard Falco, the engineer of the project, is here as well. We were last here on August 3rd, where we presented the initial site plan application to the Board for the two-tenant building on Route 33. The Board had given us a lot of input with regard to things they wanted to see incorporated in the plans, with regard to fencing, landscaping, bollards, et cetera, and the applicant did revise the plans to incorporate much of that, submitted revised plans on September 1st, and we received a revised review letter from CME dated September 30th. We've also had input from the Board regarding the fuel and detergent tanks and how they would be handled. We submitted a new report to Chief Lewis and received back a satisfactory report from him, which I believe has been distributed to all of you before this time. So with that being said, and everybody being sworn, I do have one item to mark. It is an artist rendering of a site from various different views done by Michael Ford, who's an independent contractor graphic artist that was retained by my client.
So that'll be A15. Can you just describe that again, Mr. Cohen?
Yes, it's, uh...
There's two of them?
Four sheets. There's four sheets showing various views of the site done by Michael Ford, the graphic artist retained by my client. We do, I do have six sets. I could get around to four, if you do. During the hearing.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
The graphic artist is not here tonight?
No, he's not.
I'm sorry. What is his name again?
Michael Ford.
And what firm is he with?
Yeah, he's independent. He's his own firm.
Does that mean he's just, like, working out of his basement, or does he have an LLC, or?
He's freelance.
Who do you write the check to?
Yeah, I got it. Michael Ford, directly.
Yeah. I mean, I have semi-bio on him. He used to be a CAD training center.
That would be nice, if you could just give me something.
He's a certified autodesk instructor. He has worked for, as a civil designer, a civil designer with PSNS, Bertschel, John Truhan, Laser, and D. W. Smith.
Okay.
He's been in over 20 years with it. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if there are no other initial questions, I would ask that Mr. DeFalco review the site plan specifically the changes that were made since August.
Do you need the revised site plan, which should be taken into account? Should I take the microphone?
The revised site plan that was submitted for the Board's review has taken into account the comments received at the first meeting. From a site planning point of view, we introduced landscape islands along with 33 to break up the parking and to place the tree.
Mr. DeFalco, I just want to make sure that we all have the correct document. This was dated 9/1. Is that the last revision date?
That is correct, September 1st.
All right, so this is A10. We've previously marked this. Okay, you can go ahead.
Okay, so on A10, we had a discussion at the earlier meeting that the trees were too close to the right-of-way, so we introduced landscape islands along the front of the property and moved the trees away from the highway and placed them within the landscape islands. That breaks up the front parking area. Also, on the earlier plan, there was a fence installed right along the right-of-way line, very close, within a foot. That fence has been taken off the plan. There is another fence that has been added, however. We've added a fence at the back right corner, or that would be the southwest corner of the building with a gate. And there's a second fence and gate on the east side of the building, but it's behind the front setback line. So the fence that had been along the highway has been taken off the plan, relocated about midway back on the lot, and in this case, on the west side at the rear of the building. There is a fence that encloses the parking area, and that's where the applicant will store his equipment at night. So in the front yard, we have taken out the fence, added landscaping, which is further back from the highway. We have also added bollards across the front of the parking area as required by ordinance. Now, the applicant has made a suggestion this evening, which I'd like to bring to the Board. In lieu of the bollards, he would like to put a timber guardrail similar to what is installed at Quick Check on Route 9, a little bit up the highway from here. Solid timber with steel supports in lieu of bollards. And that's something that he wanted to explore with the Board if they were agreeable to that. If not, he'll put the bollards in, just for the aesthetics. He thinks it would look much better than...
I just concur to the chief.
Agreed.
If it's safety-wise.
Absolutely.
I say that's fine.
Thank you. One other item that the Board had mentioned at the last hearing was that there was a gravel storage fenced-in yard area. It's about 30 by 30 at the west side of the building. That has now been curbed and paved so that there's no possibility of there being any kind of leakage from whatever's parked there to go into the soil directly. So we have curbed it, paved it, as part of the parking lot.
Mr. DeFalco, can you just go over, what is that area again?
It's a 30 by 30-foot square paved storage area, which is located at the southwest corner of the paved parking lot. Previously, it had been a gravel area. We revised it to... We revised it to be a curbed and paved area, which drains to the storm drainage system and into the detention basin. In addition to that paved area, there is a 10 by 12 shed placed within that paved area. And that shed would be used for the storage of some outdoor equipment, such as a leafblower, snowblower, things of that nature, which the applicant does not want to have inside of the building that he's occupying. You know, gas cans, stuff like that, stuff that you would maintain the property with, weed whacker, that type of equipment, in an outdoor shed. And that 30 by 30-foot area is enclosed with a fence, six-foot-high fence. We've also added a wooden fence, split rail fence with wire mesh around the detention basin, and that extends to the front of the building, at which point there is a chain link at the gate where the access is to the rear that picks up as a six-foot-high chain link fence and then a solid vinyl fence. So the fence that goes around the basin is four-foot-high, split rail with wire mesh to a point where it becomes chain link and then it becomes solid vinyl, which is the fence around the south side of the property. And on the east side, it's a solid fence. The gate, however, is a picket, a six-foot-high aluminum picket fence, so we can see through the gate area. In addition to the changes to the immediate site, we have added, it's on the landscape plan, but we've added a berm and 10-foot-high evergreen trees within the 50-foot perimeter buffer. A double row of 10-foot-high evergreen trees has been planted within the 50-foot buffer outside of the canopy of the existing wooded area, which is going to remain. And then in addition to that, there is a proposal to place along the property line a 10-foot-high solid vinyl fence. So between the solid vinyl fence and the landscape berm with 10-foot-high trees, we comply with the perimeter buffer ordinance to the residential unit, which sits right about to the east of our site, right about here. Now, the applicant is willing to put in the 10-foot fence.
I think you technically still require the relief. I don't believe that berm reaches six feet in height horizontally, like, the berm at its peak isn't six feet. We're not, right?
The berm is not six, but the landscaping is 10.
So you technically need relief as it relates to that. However, I know that this has been reviewed by Shari, and she took no exception to the design pending any comments from the board.
All right, so the plan is to put in the 10-foot-high fence. The applicant would just ask the board if, from a visual point of view, if that is what they really want. He's willing to put in a lower fence. He's just envisioning the neighbor looking at his door and seeing a 10-foot fence adjacent to his property and just was more concerned about the neighbors than about meeting the ordinance. He's willing to put in the 10-foot, has no problem with it, but he just, as a suggestion, would recommend it. It'll only be six feet from a neighbor point of view. He might not want to see that in your side yard. It's a very high fence. And the building is, you know, quite a distance from the neighbor's house, so between the landscaping and a normal high fence, you would still have a very similar buffer.
The neighbor is still a residential?
It is a residential, and he's willing to put in the 10, but he just wanted to bring that to the board.
But in your opinion, is it more about where the building is or the use of what the business is compared to a resident being next door?
I think it's more about what the neighbor's going to see. This use is really not an objectionable type of use. It's a very quiet use. He's only there in the morning. He's gone all day long, pretty much, comes back at night. But during the day, the neighbor's house is maybe 20 feet off the property line. So from that other side of the fence is what he's just concerned about. I don't think there's any issue with separation. We're pretty far from the neighbor. I just think it's more a visual thing that he's more concerned about. What would the neighbor say?
Does the ordinance require 10-foot?
It does.
Unless the neighbor's here to object to something lower, I can't vote, but I would recommend, I would recommend you leave the 10.
The other thing that the board could consider is maintaining the existing wood line as is proposed and installing the 10-foot fence in between the existing wood line and the berm. That's proposed. If you look up there, the fence is proposed along the property line.
Pull it in a little bit.
Pull it into, like, this area, sort of break up between the existing or proposed. But again...
That's fine.
You know, we haven't heard public comment, and you may hear from the resident as to whether or not they have a specific concern as it relates to the fence.
I think that would work. I mean, he probably...
It would work, but I don't care. Yeah, as long as they don't have to see that fence, that's going to be, like, right in their face.
I just, so pull it in.
Yeah, the applicant said if he pulled it in maybe 25 feet or to clear the vegetation, the existing trees, then you wouldn't have to be right on the lot line, and it would still serve the same purpose.
They'd still be able to maintain the vegetation?
Well, those are mature trees. There's not really much maintenance. And there will be a way to walk around the fence. It's not as if it's going to be, you know, it's just a single standalone fence. It's not connected to any other fence. So it starts at the south side and ends just before Route 33, so it doesn't block the site triangle coming out.
But just to be clear, the board would prefer the 10-foot fence, but to move it into between the existing tree line and the new trees that will be planted?
Right. And then there's a couple items in Laura's new letter. So on page three of the letter, item... Looks like item three, letter B. Fences and walls shall not be higher than four feet unless setback from the street line, the minimum setback in the zone. We have a 10-foot-high fence, which we just talked about. So that 10-foot-high fence extends beyond the front setback line for the zone. So we do need a variance technically. Even though the ordinance requires us to put up a fence, it also requires us not to put up a fence. So we need a variance to put the 10-foot-high fence within the front setback line on our lot. In addition to that, we have a four-foot-high fence, which I mentioned before, a split rail fence with wire mesh along the detention basin. And that detention basin is also located within the front setback, so we technically need a variance to put the fence on top of a three-foot wall, which makes it a seven-foot-high structure, I guess, if you look at it from the rear of it, within the front setback line. So technically, that's a variance because it's a four-foot fence on top of a three-foot wall. The wall's only visible from the other direction, however. From Route 33, it looks like a four-foot fence, but from the rear of the basin, it looks like a seven-foot fence.
Just to clarify, that isn't a variance, this is a design waiver.
Okay, design waiver. Thank you. Item C, we will comply with the .3-foot candles and .5-foot candles to meet the ordinance on lighting. I think we're a little bit brighter than the ordinance calls for, so we'll tone down the lights a little bit. Section D, all areas between parking areas in the building shall be landscaped. So we do have access points from the parking lot into the building, at the garage doors, at the front entryway, at the rear garage door, and at the two side garage doors on the west side. We do have a liquid storage area on the east side of the building, which is within a canopy-covered area. Other than the access ways and the liquid storage area, we have added landscaping between the curb and building in all areas that are not entranceways or driveways. That's the best we can do on this. We've added landscaping on both sides of the liquid storage area, on the south side of the building, and at the corners where the garage doors end. So we ask for that waiver of not being continuous around the entire building. Section E, we talked about at the first meeting, on sidewalk on Route 33, and it was my recollection the board agreed that sidewalk was not to be recommended at this location on Highway 33. That was the board consensus at the first hearing. So we still are asking for that waiver. And comment number four, we had talked about, we talked about A and B previously, and C we talked about as well, the parking area. We have 22 marked parking spaces, which exceeds what we think is the need. And I think at the last meeting, Ms. Newman said 15 or 16 would be a suitable number. We presently have 22 spaces. That occurred by us marking out spaces on the east side of the property, which had been unmarked storage area before. It was the same pavement area, but we did not have stripes there. So we have added some more striping to make sure that we have sufficient parking. We agreed, on comment D, we agreed to provide a Knox box, which was recommended by the fire chief, and that'll be installed. There is two gates. As I mentioned before, the gates are sliding gates. They meet at the center of the driveway, and they slide both east and west the same. This is a sliding gate and a swing gate, so that they're totally open during the daytime and secured at night, locked in the center. We have 30-foot-wide aisle around the entire building, and we have passed the design vehicle, single-unit truck around this in both directions without any issue on truck maneuverability. We do not anticipate tractor-trailer deliveries or use of this site by tractor-trailers. On item F, the easternmost parallel parking space, we reshifted some of the parking around at the dumpster area slightly, so we have more maneuverability to get into these large parallel parking spaces. They are 46 feet long, and the trailers with the trucks are around 36 feet long. We don't believe there's a problem backing into that spot with the trailer and a pickup truck. And we have four of those parallel spaces along the back of the property line. So there's enough maneuvering room, and the way his operation is, basically, one truck comes in at a time, they don't all show up at the same time. They're all out on the job site, and when they come back, they'll be queuing around the liquid area to refuel and to add supplies for the next day, and they can queue into those spaces very easily by driving around the building.
If I could, Mr. DeFalco, I think the balance of these items were addressed during your previous testimony, and what I would ask is, the items contained in item number five, do you agree to comply with those?
Yes, we do. There was a couple things, I think I sent you some emails back and forth about some of those items.
Well, but for purposes of the resolution...
For purposes of the resolution, we will comply with items A through O in Laura's letter. Comment number five. And that's that.
Any questions, Mr. DeFalco? Chairman, the only other thing I want to make sure we had on the record, and I believe is part of our case and was submitted previously, there was concerns expressed by Mr. Goddard and others at the last meeting regarding the fuel tank and the detergents and any safety issues that would be involved with that. Immediately after our August 3rd meeting, on August 7th, my client sent an email to Chief Lewis regarding the specifics of the site, laying out the safety precautions and how everything would be handled. And on August 10th, Chief Lewis wrote back to my client, thanking him for all the input and saying that all their questions were in fact satisfied and that a couple items would be handled during construction. I just want the record to reflect, I believe you all have a copy of that, if there are any questions.
It's marked as B14. 14.
At the end of your session?
My 14 says 14.
B14?
Oh, sorry.
Other side of the page.
Mr. Chairman, that would conclude our presentation of this segment.
Anything, questions from the board?
Just the remaining question I had was on item B19, the letter from the Environmental Commission with regard to the identification of animals observed on the property.
I did see that comment. I just found it unusual that that comment would be for a developed site that's been on Route 33 for quite some time. I don't think...
Yeah, I thought the wording was a little obscure as well. Any issues, Ms. Newman, from that comment that's on there?
No, I do not have any issues.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing all, I'll open it out to the public. Is there anybody that'd like to come up and ask any questions about this application? Please stand, come up.
Or to provide testimony. Or to provide testimony as well.
Provide testimonies. Seeing none, close the public portion. The motion for approval of case number SP 1032 for preliminary and final.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for the approval of case number SP 1032, preliminary and final, subject to the approval, along with the approval for the variance and design waiver for section 188-12A, in accordance with all of the items noted as being acceptable to the applicant for the board engineer's review letter.
I'll second that.
Do you have a second?
I second it.
Roll call please.
Former Mayor Goddard?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
And Chairman Schneider?
And Mr. Nash, confirm on it.
I'm sorry, yes. Mr. Nash did...
Yes.
And I say yes.
Thank you. Mr. Nash certified, so he was eligible to vote.
This one will make a comment. Mr. Hagerty, I just think you went out of your way. It's a beautiful structure for a business.
Yeah, thanks. I'm really looking forward to doing business in Hal. I've already been doing business here for 27 years. It's going to be great having a new building. Stop by when it's done.
Absolutely.
See you later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next case on the agenda, this case number SP 1035. Joseph Wilhelm, preliminary, final, major site plan and bulk variance and woodlands management. Application of Joseph Wilhelm as applicant, and Joseph and Zelda Wilhelm as owners seeking preliminary and final major site plan with ancillary bulk variance and woodland management approval to remove all existing site improvements and construct a two-story, 9,250 square office building with 39 parking spaces along the front of the building on premises known as block 78.10, lot 34.101 to Clayton Road. Application was partially heard on August 17th, carried to October 5th, October 5th, carried to October 19th, no further notice. Eligible owners are former Mayor Goddard, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Nash, Russo, Tannenhouse, French, and myself.
Mr. Chair, just before Mr. Cohen enters his appearance again, if the board remembers, we carried this application after beginning testimony because we found out during that process that there had been previous zoning board approvals that we were unaware of. And Mr. Cohen and I had to take a look at it in order to... And Mr. Cohen and I had to take a look at it in order to determine whether this board actually had jurisdiction or not. I have looked at it and it appears, based upon the resolutions that I have reviewed, that it was before the zoning board, I guess back in two thousand, two thousand, because there was a subdivision and one of the proposed lots was going to contain a non-conforming residential structure. And because it was gonna now be located on a much smaller lot, it was an intensification of the nonconformity which required variance relief. This application is going to remove that residential structure. So the reason that the devariance was required from the zoning board no longer exists. So I do think that this board has jurisdiction to hear the application. With that said though, there was a statement, and that statement is what actually led to us discovering the resolutions, that the lot sizes were nonconforming, pre-existing nonconforming. That I do not agree with. They were created by way of a subdivision at the zoning board. So they don't have any vested rights. They, that was their own decision to create those lots of those sizes at the time. But this board does have jurisdiction.
Very good. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Todd Cohen for the applicant, Joseph Wilhelm. I have with me this evening Graham McFarlane, who is the engineer for the project, and Mr. John Ray, our traffic engineer, is also present if there are any questions as to whether traffic reports submitted for this application. We were last here, I believe, on August seventeen and presented an initial site plan to which the board had some comments. And then we ran into a little jurisdictional issue, which is now resolved. In the interim, there were some minor changes made to the plans, which plans were resubmitted on September twenty-ninth, which generated, I believe, an October fifth letter from CME Associates, which we are also prepared to address this evening. With that being said, Mr. McFarlane, I believe, as previously been sworn, and if there's no other questions initially, I would have him present the changes to the board and obviously review any questions or comments that the board would have.
Hey, Mr. McFarlane, you remain under oath.
Thank you. Good evening. Yes, as indicated by Mr. Cohen, we have submitted revised plans. I believe the revision date on the plan says nine twenty-seven seventeen. It should be the plans that you all have in front of you. We have addressed comments that were received from the board at the initial hearing as well as address some, most of the technical comments that we had previously received from CME. Some of the changes we made were to add additional landscaping to the application, both along the perimeter of the property to provide better screening along the frontage of the site between the parking and the roadways. And also to increase the perimeter buffer on the west side of the property between the site and the residential home, which is located again to the west side of the property. If the board recalls, we had some discussion at the initial hearing regarding a retaining wall which we had around the trash enclosure. We had taken a look at that and were able to come up with an alternate design, present a revised grading plan, which has eliminated the need for that retaining wall and I believe eliminated the need for any design waiver or variance that we had some discussion on that was possibly associated with that original, with that original design. Nothing else has been changed in regards to the site plan, the building footprint, the area, the number of parking spaces, still remains the same as originally proposed. The two-story building of nine thousand, you know, plus or minus square feet with four tenant spaces proposed. We do have a couple of design waivers which are required in connection with the application. One of them relates, one of them relates to the proposed lighting. We have revised the lighting plan based upon some input from CME and also to satisfy IES standards. So we are seeking a design waiver to provide a minimum of point five foot candles of lighting for the project. We have a total of, I believe it's four freestanding lights proposed, as well as a couple of building-mounted lights proposed. The freestanding lights, I believe they're fourteen feet in height. And they are all pointed inwards to the parking lot. None of them, none of them are pointed outwards towards the neighboring properties. So we did try to locate those to minimize any impact to adjoining properties. And again, they're only fourteen feet in height, which is pretty low. We tried to keep them as low as we possibly could and still provide a suitable level of lighting for the project. We also have a design waiver related to foundation landscaping. I'm gonna, well, I'm gonna show you this rendering that was prepared. This needs to be more.
Is this something that was introduced previously?
No, it's not.
Okay, so this will be A thirteen.
Do you want to mark it or?
Yeah, if you can mark it.
Thirteen, you said?
Correct.
A thirteen.
Yeah, this is a colored rendering of the site done by B F Design of Lakeland.
And if I could, and it was a little hard to see, I'd like to just bring it up to the board so you guys could take a look at it. It's a rendering showing the, showing the proposed building and it also shows the three locations where we, where we have provided planters along in front of the building to provide for some foundation plantings. Understanding that your ordinance does require foundation landscaping along in front of the building, we provided those planters to try to satisfy the intent of the ordinance. And we have those planters located at three locations. The only spot where we don't have the planter proposed is where we need to have room available for handicap access. So we provided three foundation planters again, which we believe satisfies the intent of the ordinance. We have a waiver associated with contribution to the Talented Tree Fund. I know you guys hear this discussion all the time. Your ordinance is very, very strong in its requirements for tree replanting. And we really cannot physically fit all the trees that are required to be planted. So we will make the contribution in lieu of all the plantings required, but that does require a design waiver from your ordinance.
How many trees would you have been required to replant under the ordinance?
Give me a second, I can tell you that number. The ordinance requires seventy-one replacement trees. We have twenty-eight trees proposed, again calculating in accordance with your ordinance. So that leaves forty-three net replacement trees required. And we have determined a contribution of twelve thousand nine hundred dollars. And that's indicated on our landscape plan that was submitted with the application package.
Far off from seventy-one.
And the fourth waiver we have is related to the freestanding signs that are proposed. The board recalls, we did have some discussion on the signage at the last, at the last hearing. My opinion is that I don't believe we require any waiver or relief because the ordinance specifically speaks to a twenty-foot setback where the sign is located along a highway. I don't believe Kent Road or Clayton Road would meet the definition of a highway. That same section of the ordinance indicates that ten feet, ten feet setback to property lines should be provided, and that is what we have, we have satisfied. So my opinion is that we don't require the relief. However, if the board or officials have a different interpretation, we would argue that the waiver or relief is still granted. In my opinion, the signs are provided in locations that provide for increased motor and safety, allow adequate viewing of the signs. If they were set back further, they would not be viewed as easily. So I believe as a matter of public safety, the signs are provided in appropriate locations. In regards to the other technical comments from the CME Review Letter, we'll agree to address all of those comments.
Any questions of Mr. McFarlane?
Is there, is there adequate bollard, is there adequate bollard protection in front of the handicap spot? Tough to see if, it looks like there's a sign, but I can't see.
I know we did add the bollards to the plan. Just give me a second to get to that sheet. We have, we have provided bollards for the parking spaces that are in front of the building. If you look, if you look at the handicap spots, the one that is closest to the building, we do have a bollard proposed since that space is up against the building. The second space, we do not have a bollard proposed. I did not think your ordinance required a bollard for that second space since it is not up against the building.
Excuse me, doesn't our ordinance require bollards for the spaces that face Clayton Road?
I believe it does. And similar to the last application, we don't have them on the plan right now. Similar to the last application, I would answer we would be permitted to provide a, you know, a linear guide rail in lieu of the bollards for aesthetic purposes. For the, yeah, for the parking spaces that front on Clayton.
Would that be the heavy timber one?
Yes, timber.
That what we're looking for?
Timber posts.
Yeah, the one we talked about last application.
Yes.
Not timber posts, steel posts.
Steel posts, heavier timber.
Steel posts, timber guy, for the record. Up against a building, though, I believe the individual bollards are more appropriate as we have shown on the site plan that the board has in front of them.
You have four bollards to the left. They're not perpendicular to the building, so you don't really need them there.
Correct. We'll be happy to take those off the plan. Basin is approximately five feet deep.
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would recommend, since those are facing the basin, that we put some bollards there just, just for adequate protection. Someone doesn't hit the accelerator and.
We'll defer to the pleasure of the board.
I would leave the bollards there. See no harm. He's already showing them.
Well, they're moving, they're taking away four that they don't need, so they can put them over there.
No, that's the same four.
Same location.
The ones that they wanted to take away. We're saying, don't take them away.
He was talking about removing these.
It depends on the other side of the bollard.
Yeah, that's what I said. Yeah, so he's gonna leave those because that's protecting the basin. Oh, okay.
In your lighting, you have a note here that the light fixtures will be furnished with dimmers. I see no control sequence that indicates dimmers will be used. Are you providing the dimmers and the dimmer capability in case that the neighbors don't like the proposed full-on and timer-off and you have the ability to dim that?
Well, I don't, I don't believe dimmers is the right terminology. I think that's an error. Frankly, I don't know why that note's on there. So that will have to be cleaned up. If you look at the lighting plan though, what we have proposed is to have the lights either, either as dusk to dawn full operation or just for, you know, or untimed operation. So we would have two of the lights on site, the two that are close to the driveway. We're proposing them to be, you know, full operation, so on for dusk, dusk to dawn hour.
Yeah, I had no problems with the full time. It just, where the dimmer fell.
The dimmer, that note's just, that note's incorrect.
Okay. This, this property's gonna be serviced by septic and, well, is there gonna be any testimony on what kind of offices are gonna be used by this?
Well, these are gonna, these are gonna be general offices. The septic code is very clear that it dictates the flow rates per, you know, per square foot that we have to design for. So these are just, you know, general offices. We don't know the exact tenants or users of the facility other than they have to be in accordance with what's permitted in the zone.
But the building will be designed with the capability of the bathrooms low, flush, all that kind of stuff to handle the septic system?
Yes.
Laura, do you have any comments on the application?
Well, I would ask, I mean, there's a technical, there's technical comments, I think, as we get to, there's very, very minor technical comments. I mean, the plans, we've seen three iterations. You agreed to comply to those?
Yes. Yes, we do.
I believe, yeah.
Beyond that, nothing really additional?
Technically complete.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's the conclusion of the testimony?
I believe it does, Mr. Chairman.
So I have a question for Ms. Newman, just to make sure I understand what the existing condition issues are for A and B in your review letter. Does, does that apply to anything that could be proposed on that lot as long as it's an approved use within that zone?
That is correct.
Okay, open it to the public now. Does anybody like to come up and speak? Please come up. Give your name and your address.
Okay, sir, I just need to swear you in before we start. You can get up to the microphone. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, can you please state and spell your name for us?
My name is John Strevens. I'm sorry, I got a bit of a sore throat. S.T.R.E.V.E.N.S.
And your address?
Well, next door.
Okay, go ahead.
We're good?
Yep.
I'm a builder. I live right next door to that and I've gone in front of plenty of planning boards and gotten variances and been denied for many of them too. So I know the process. When I built this house, when I built my house in two thousand and one, when I spoke with the woman who had owned it, who had done this, I went and I pulled the resolution in and I saw her notes and I got the minutes. And I went through it 'cause I didn't, I have a decent-sized house. It's three thousand square foot. The basement's two thousand square foot, all finished off with permits. And it's only like fifteen foot off the side of this property land. On paper, it doesn't look so bad, but if you drove down the street and you had an investment like I did there, you'd certainly be thinking hard 'cause this is not gonna, obviously, nobody is gonna pay top dollar for the house now. But more importantly, if you read through the minutes, and I don't know if you guys had a chance to go back through it, but, you know, they granted the subdivision before allowing the creation of my residential lot, and it was swayed strongly by the fact that the use was consistent with the pattern of established residential lots in the neighborhood. The board also stated the residential use was the best use of the property. The board recognized that even prior to granting the subdivision, when it was still two acres, it would be an extraordinary hardship to require the parcel to be used solely for commercial development. This hardship is even greater now considering the fact the subdivision was granted and the parcel is now only one acre, half the size it was before. And the above facts are clearly set forth in the zoning board resolution of approval. In addition to the resolution, the minutes of the public hearing, if you read them, and I have a couple excerpts here, I'll read to you, they all say that it should remain residential and not commercial. And I was really thorough about this when I bought because it was the last thing I wanted. I knew what it was zoned in and I was worried about it. But like, if you go back through, and I'll just read a couple of them here, Attorney Kennedy, which was on page eight of the minutes, essentially what we are doing is we are taking the existing property and we're creating two new buildable lots that are, the area-wise, frontage-wise, depth-wise conform with the requirements of the zoning board of the R3 zone. And I would point out to the board members that area, the exact location of these two proposed lots, where they are, are surrounded by other residential homes. This would fit in very nicely with the scheme that is there at the present time. Board Planner, is it Hire or Hayer? I don't wanna keep getting it wrong.
Excuse me? Higher.
Higher, okay. He went, with respect to the general use of the property, I think there is a good case to be made for the residential use of the property, given the location of the existing structure and given the residential character of the property to the west. With respect to the residential property, I don't have a problem recommending that use, but the question is whether it should be two or three. They tried to get three lots out of it initially. He goes on to say, again, that is why I think the residential use of this property is proper, given the fact it's only twelve thousand, sixteen thousand square feet in commercial zone. I think it's going to be harsh as it applies to this property and it can't possibly meet the zoning standards. Commercial. Commercial needs 80,000 square feet, and because of its configuration, the septics, which we've already addressed." Again, this is a matter of intensity. He goes on, um... He, he comes right out and says it on page 37. "We are allowing a subdivision here, and actually, this is no longer allowing this to be a commercial property, as it will be under 80,000 square feet. There was never sufficient property in the commercial zone for it to be used for commercial purposes. The zone line ran right where the lot line is, and it is split between the AR3 and the HD1, all that it was. If you look at the township-wide map, the zoning lines were drawn with a fairly wide brush, and these two lots got bisected out. This property was never a commercial lot." You understand, this is what I was reading when I bought the property. I mean, I would think this stuff would, would carry. He goes on, "Mr. Johnson, this," and I'm not sure who he is, I guess it was somebody on the board. "This will be zoned for two rental, two residential lots, is that correct, Planner Haye?" "Well, this would be for two residential homes, if anything. If you wish it to be different in future, it would require further action of one of the boards." And they go back through.
Well, just to stop you there, that's where we are now.
Right, I know, I understand. I understand. Uh, on page 39, "At this point in time, and knowing what the issues were in the past, and looking at what the proposed lot is, if the property never develops beyond this, that would be the best thing for the township. I think this is a reasonable use of the property." "Attorneys draw up a resolution based on our findings, in fact, the recommendations from our planner, the two subdivision is the best use of the land and the master plan of Howell Township. The lot was never ideal for commercial use in a highway development zone due to insufficient lot frontage. There is no order and sewer, we've addressed that already. I con, um, Mr. Meyer, I concur with Mr. Johnson, I feel that the two subdivision will be beneficial for the zone. It brings with it the realm of the lots that are there, both in size and shape. As far as the portion that is in the commercial zone, there is really nothing that could be done with it, commercially anyway, and I feel that it should be moved, positive." At one point, this is the end of it too, um... "Mr. Gil Lamati, I, if I got the hang, 'I make a motion that we, the zoning board of adjustments, send a letter to the township stating, we believe this property should be put in the ARE1 zone.'" Planner Haye responded, "The problem with that is, there is no particular zone, it would be little tiny spot of AR1. If you want the zoning to match, you would put it in AR1, ARE1, is that the recommendation?" Chairman Van Nooy, "I think that is a very good idea. That reminds me of something else that I was hoping that we could enact in the very near future. That might take the form of a motion." Mr. Giometti, "I make that motion, sir." And Chairman Van Nooy, "I will second that." And then they go on. And that's where it is. And on another note, and this is only because I have this in another town, and like I said, I mean, I'm only one person here tonight. If you go down that street and you look at it, it's, it's definitely not. I mean, the, the picture they show there, I couldn't imagine that being next door to my house. It just, it just wouldn't, I'm looking for this thing I had, it, it just wouldn't be, it wouldn't help me, that's for sure. But another attorney, and I'm partners with several on different projects, but, um, who does a lot of this, he pointed this out to me, and I could be correct, it could be not, but he was pretty good, and he swore it was, uh, and by saying this, it's not like I'm saying I think it's a good idea as long as you do this, I'm just pointing it out. In your zoning requirements, 188-63 buffers and screening, you have a thing where it's a residence and a non, residential and a non-residential. "Every application for site plan, major sub, or major subdivision, lots one acre more shall contain a 50-foot perimeter buffer or farmland buffer easement, as the case said, separating a non-residential use from either a residential use or residential zoning district line or active farmland. Non-residential sites abutting non-residential uses or zones shall not require a buffer. Where an application is adjacent to the farmland, all filed maps and deeds contain the farm notice language, it's irrelevant." But, that's where I stand.
Can I ask a question? I guess at the end of your research, before you bought your house, did you not realize...
I built the house.
Okay, when you built your house.
Mm-hmm.
You, you did realize that this lot was zoned highway development, did you not?
I knew it was, uh...
It's a yes to no.
Let him answer the question, Mr. Cohen, in the way that he wishes to.
Yeah, exactly. It, it was, it was, uh, it was, um, HD1, and it also was residential, it was a split zone. And that's why I read all that, and reading that, you would think that it wasn't going to be used for this.
But there was a subdivision done, and a use variance granted during that application, correct?
Yes.
And you're aware of that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Todd, what's happening with that corner lot? There's a, an abandoned house on that property? Is that, is that your property?
It is the property, I believe.
So that house is being removed?
Yes, yeah.
So it's this property?
Yeah, no, I know.
We're just one of Clayton and...
If you're looking at the first aid squad building.
Yes.
Yeah, it's right behind the first aid squad.
It's to the left of the driveway to the first aid squad.
See, nobody else, close the public portion?
Mr. Chairman, there, there was, you know, an issue brought up that I sort of touched upon at the beginning of the hearing, and I don't know if Mr. Todd wants to provide anything additional. The board wants to hear anything additional. At the first hearing, the size of the lot was presented as a pre-existing non-conforming condition. It's not. Pre-existing non-conforming means it was permitted, and then there was a zone change, and now it's not permitted. That's not what happened here. There was a subdivision of the property, the applicant at that time chose to create the size of the lot. So this is more of a self-created hardship, uh, that doesn't give any particular vested rights that come with being a non-conforming, uh, pre-existing, pre-existing non-conforming lot. So, Mr. Cohen, I don't know if you wanted to provide any additional, uh, planning testimony or just rest on what, you know, was provided at the first hearing, considering it's not a pre-existing non-conforming, uh, condition.
Well, I believe from a, from a planning perspective, our, our application proposes a commercial use in the HD1 zone, which is, um, consistent with, with those requirements. That's why we're here in front of, in front of this board. Uh, the, the previous subdivision, when it spoke about, uh, use fa, use factors...
What I'm talking about is, why is it that this, why is it that this project, which is required to be on an 80,000 square foot lot under our ordinance, why is the 40,000 square foot lot adequate? Why, why, what is the positive and negative criteria for placing this on a 40,000 square foot lot when the ordinance requires a larger one?
Right, I believe the, the positive, positive, negative criteria, um, very briefly, is, is that our application is proposing a commercial use in the HD1 zone, permitted in the HD1 zone, which is why we're here in front of, in front of, uh, in front of this board. Uh, we're not seeking any, uh, relief, uh, except for a very, very minor or a de minimis request for, uh, for setback for those little corners in the back of the building. I, I did provide testimony on that at the initial hearing. I believe we have 10 square feet of encroachment, uh, within those, uh, within that, within that setback. The, uh, the existing condition, uh, has upon it a single-family house, which is not in accordance with the, with the zoning of the property, not in accordance with the master plan, uh, and not consistent with the goals and objectives outlined in the master plan or in the municipal land use law. So our, uh, our application brings this property into conformance with the zoning that's on the records, and also brings it in conformance with the master plan.
Well, it brings it into conformance with the permitted uses.
Correct.
Not, not the zoning.
Correct.
No, no, it's not the totality of the zoning.
With the permitted uses, correct.
Yeah.
And, uh, the, 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 um, the level of intensity of the site is being developed is within the confines of your ordinance. The, the impervious cover is well below what's, what's permissible. We provided the buffering in accordance with the requirements of your ordinance. We provided parking in accordance with, with requirements of your ordinance. We're proposing a, a building smaller than, than, than could be provided if the site were, uh, were, were maximized to its, to its absolute fullest potential. Uh, so I believe when, when we weigh all those factors, this, this application brings, brings this particular property, uh, into conformance with zoning requirements, and it eliminates an existing, uh, non-conformity or, or a use which is non-compliant with your zoning requirements or the master plan.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Ron?
Yes.
The square footage issue of the lot, what, what's making that, keep it here versus sending it to zoning?
It wasn't the square footage of the lot that brought it to the zoning board in and of itself, it was the fact that there was a house on the lot.
No, I, no, I got that part, I'm just saying...
But that's why it's here.
They only have like, half the, half the square footage required by...
That's not, that's not a use issue.
Oh.
Uh, it only goes to the zoning board if there's a use, or, um, one of the six criteria, whether it's a use, whether it's floor area ratio, whether it's density, um, height, you know, those, those issues. So it doesn't fall within the D variances.
Got it.
If you're not a D variance, you're a C, and then you're here.
So to put that in layman's terms, per the municipal land use law, this is a, a minor...
No, I wouldn't call it minor. The type of relief that they need is not relief that the zoning board has exclusive jurisdiction over.
Got it.
So does that mean we have the ability to not grant the relief?
Yes. Um, if you find that, uh, they have not satisfied the positive and negative criteria for the variances that they're seeking, or for, or the criteria for the waivers, you can deny it. There's not a, this is not, uh, like a permitted use that doesn't require any relief, where you must grant it. They still have a burden of proof, and you still have a quasi-judicial role to play here, and if you find they haven't satisfied the criteria, you could deny it.
Can we get a little testimony on this? I'm, I'm just a little with this 10-foot wide buffer between the residential and your property.
Sure. Uh, what we have proposed along the, uh, the west, uh, property line, again, uh, adjacent to Mr. Strevens, who just spoke, is a 10-foot wide buffer, which is what your ordinance requires. Uh, Mr. Strevens made reference to, uh, the, the, the buffer standard where a 50-foot perimeter buffer is required, but that only implies to properties that are one acre or larger. This site, uh, is not over one acre in, in area, and is not required to provide the 50-foot perimeter buffer. It is required to provide the 10-foot perimeter buffer, which is what we have provided. So our application as presented, uh, satisfies ordinance requirements.
See, that's a little bit of the problem that I have with this whole application, is it almost seems like it's advantageous to not have to provide a buffer, because the lot happens to be too small. So we seem to be in this kind of habit trail as to whether, how, how do we justify that this is an acceptable granting of that variance as opposed to whatever other occupancy that could be put in that lot?
I agree.
I, I don't...
Well, I, I, just along that, to, to, to go along in, in that direction, the reason they don't have enough land is because the prior owner made it that way. And I guess what I was, what I was just asking the professionals is, it seems to be an odd kind of situation, that you get to be relieved of buffer requirements because you have created a smaller lot for yourself. So I think we're discussing that a little bit ourselves. It seems odd that that's how the law would work, that you can create your own, yeah, al- almost relieve your, give yourself relief through a prior subdivision.
Is there any testimony that this project cannot be done without a 50-foot buffer? Shifting things over? I'm not an architect, I'm not a designer.
Well, again, I, I don't, I don't believe, uh, I don't believe it's appropriate for, for, for the type of use that, that we're proposing, uh, for the size of, of the site and, and for the, the, uh, the level of use that's going to be, uh...
So let me just hold you on there. If this property was an acre, you would need it, right?
If the property was an acre, ordinance would require...
Would you still make that argument?
If the property was an acre, we would, we would provide a conforming plan.
Would you make that argument that you don't feel it's needed because of the use of this, of what type of use you're putting there?
I probably would not, but we're not here with that application.
But you are.
We're here with an app, well, we're here with an application that meets what I'm going to be larger...
Okay, so, so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna argue with you?
So just to, along that point, if I, if I'm correct, an acre is 43,560 square feet, correct?
Yes.
So, so just to remind my fellow board members that we're talking about a 400-square-foot difference in the size of the lot, where that would have been a requirement.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, just, I'm sorry, Mr. Cohen, I, I didn't want to cut you off, okay. So I, I think, just in looking at it, one of the things to consider in a variance for an undersized lot, which they created, or, they didn't, but this, the hardship carries, carries forward, is that they're not providing the buffer that would normally be provided, you know, had it, had it been a full-size lot. So that may be something in terms of negative criteria to consider in the lot size variance.
I think I'd be more willing to consider this, knowing that there was a...
Or actually, do you believe there is a lot size variance?
I'm sorry?
I mean, you agree there's a variance for lot size, right?
Yes, it doesn't meet the square foot.
I think that's one way to consider it, is in the negative criteria of that. You would normally get a buffer that you're not getting now.
We also have a letter from the Environmental Commission dated 10/11/17 that states that, that the Environmental Condition, Commission has still not received the requested information from their 4/26/17 review.
A little due respect, Mr. Tenet, as if you look at their 4/26 memo, uh, their first question is they'd like to know the type of tenants. The second question says it concerns a possibility of existing oil tanks. Obviously, if there's oil tanks, we have to abide by the law. The third question talks about septic field decommission and well decommission, which obviously we have to take care of in the Department to regulate. And that a separate maintenance plan for the detention base should be provided. Obviously, we would be happy to provide that. And their last comment, "The site is tight, and it may have traffic issues depending on tenant concern." Again, you know, we have a traffic, we have a traffic report, I'm not sure that's an environmental issue, but I believe we've addressed, or will address, have to address legally, everything they mentioned in their first report.
Can we take...
I'd like to go back to the...
I'd like to take a five-minute break, Mr. Chairman, if, after we're done testing.
I just have one more thing, just about this buffer, because when your neighbor came up here and, you know, said a 10-foot buffer was, was, that's what, I mean, I know this neighborhood, you know? I drive past it all the time. Is there any way to get the 50-foot buffer and push it back? I know you said it's...
I don't know if we can do a 50-foot buffer, but we have had an initial discussion. I know we could definitely do more than 10.
That's correct.
Uh, we could definitely do 25 without even, I think, an issue, but, um, we'd like to look at it before we commit to it.
I mean, I think we're talking about, you're 400 feet short, 400 square feet short of an acre.
Interesting concern.
What's, what's pushing the building so far towards the neighborhood? Why isn't it closer to the road? Is there a reason?
Well, because we have, we have a corner lot that has, that has, you know, frontage requirements on both, on both Clayton and Ken. If you look at, uh, if you look at the site plan, sheet three, you can see where we have the, you know, the building setback lines, uh, you know, drawn on there, so of course, as the building goes closer...
I'm sorry, which sheet was that?
Sheet three, the site plan.
Okay. I'm with you.
Uh, you can see tho, those building setback lines, how, how narrow they get as we approach Ken Road, because the site has, you know, two frontage, a corner lot with two frontage.
So if you move the building all the way towards the road, you would then need relief for that?
Potentially, yes. So we, we tried to locate the building in, in a manner that, uh, requested the, the minimal relief possible.
I don't want to speak for the board, but I think I would be a little more inclined to grant this application if, or grant that, uh, relief as opposed to, uh, the 10-foot buffer.
Yeah, because that setback would be facing the first aid squad and not a residential home.
Right.
I think that's a little more tolerable, but...
Mr. Chairman, uh, Brian had mentioned taking a five-minute break, we could probably have been working on that.
Let's take a, uh, 15-minute break.
The board will now reconvene.
Um, Mr. Chairman, if I might, the, uh, we've had an opportunity to discuss the board's comments with regard to the buffer and the neighbor's comments, and, uh, we'd like very much an opportunity to go back and redesign the plan to see if we can, uh, come to some happy compromise with the buffer. We think we can extend it to possibly 30 feet. We're going to have to move the building, we're going to have to move the detention base, we're going to have to lose a couple parking spaces. We have to move the septic system, but, uh, in the spirit of cooperation, um, we're willing to do so and come back and show the board a better... we're willing to do so and come back and show the board a better design that will, uh, take into consideration our neighbor a little better.
Okay, that's good.
Yes, sir.
Do you want to be carried to a date certain, or do you want to just renotice?
We don't want to float.
This is what October, can really have something in December? What's your December calendar, Mr. Chairman?
December seventh, you have Stagola. December twenty-first, that's it.
Uh, the seventh, do you have enough time? December seventh?
Yeah, I believe so.
We could do December seventh.
Okay.
And you would just need plans ten days prior? Do you want them a little?
That's correct.
Little in advance, or?
Well, as in advance as possible because our professionals need an opportunity to take a look.
But if ten days minimum, we're okay?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'll just need an extension of time as well.
Right.
You can put it right on the record.
Yes, I'd like to extend that time to, uh.
Okay, so the application of Joseph Wilhelm, case number SP dash one oh three five, be carried to the board's December seventh, two thousand seventeen meeting, seven o'clock here in the main meeting room. Uh, there will be revised plans that will be available no later than, uh, ten days prior to December seventh. There'll be no further notice to property owners. So sir, if you received a notice of the meeting tonight, you're not going to receive another one in the mail. This is to tell you tonight that, uh, December seventh, seven o'clock here.
Thank you very much.
Last application this evening is case number SP ten thirty-four. Gutierrez Properties LLC. It's a minor site plan application, Gutierrez Properties. Application and owner seeking minor site plan approval utilized property as a storage yard for construction material on premises known as block forty-nine, lot twenty-one dot oh one, Lakewood Farmingdale Road, county line five twenty-four. This application is scheduled to be heard in September fourteenth, carried to October nineteenth, with no further notice. Counselor.
Yeah, do I have to use this mic or am I good?
Good.
Good? Okay. Robert F. Munoz, Davidson Eastman Munoz, Letterman and Payon, on behalf of the applicant. I think we're gonna have, we're gonna have, other than the exhibits that are already marked, we have one other exhibit to mark. Do you want us to mark it now or do you want us to?
Just whenever you get to it, we'll mark it at that time.
Uh, Chairman, members of the board, this, uh, particular property is the Old Daisy Landscaping Property. And it was the, in two thousand four, it was the, uh, object of an application before the zoning board to maintain the landscaping or, I don't call it landscaping, whatever you call those businesses that it.
Nursery.
Nursery business and, um, which was subsequently, didn't work out and was abandoned. And now, uh, what's happened after that was we had, we had some discussions with the then zoning officer and we were told at that time, Northeast Remsco, which is the pro- the company that Mr. Gutierrez owns, was working on the Gowanus Canal in, uh, Brooklyn?
Brooklyn.
Where is it? Okay. Let's try and see if anybody will help me with that. Um, and we were asked to store some things there and they told us it was permitted. So, and that we could store dry storage there. So we did that. So, uh, we've recently learned that maybe that's not allowed to be done, so, without a site plan. So that's the reason for this site plan. Rather than try to figure out who said what to whom, um, we've decided to come in with this application. This application, um, based on that history is, is for, is just for that dry storage. The, uh, Gutierrez Company, Northeast Remsco, recently was one of the four or five, uh, contractors who did all that work on the Garden State Parkway you suffered with and saw for the past couple of years that was just completed. Um, and as a result, had a lot of leftover material they're trying to get rid of and needed to store it someplace. And that, this is where they stored it based upon what was represented to them previously. Like I said, we've since found out that we have a new site plan and that's why we're here. My, my witness is, um, Joseph Bonner. He's the engineer.
Can you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Joseph P. Bonner, B-O-N-N-E-R.
Mr. Bonner, will you give the board the, um, benefit of your, uh, educational background and credentials, please?
I'm a professional engineer licensed in New York, New Jersey, Kentucky, Rhode Island. And I have a bachelor of science of civil engineering from the New Jersey Institute of Technology.
Have you appeared before the boards and how on previous dates?
I have.
I'll accept your credentials.
Thank you, sir.
Um, did you prepare an exhibit for this evening?
I did.
Okay. Which I'm probably gonna have to hold, Mr. Chairman, because we don't have any.
I'll hold it if you want.
Okay, we'll have, we'll have our, let me get my.
Sure. A six.
I'm gonna go there where he is and show you my.
Yeah.
Would you? Should we work it?
My son would not work it.
Who is this?
I always bring them. You don't have the other ones to use it, so you never have.
I know, right?
So this plan is just an overview of the, uh, entire site. It's, uh, eighteen acres. Twelve, uh, twelve and a half acres in the back, five and a half acres in the front. The five and a half acres in the front is in the SED zone. Uh, as the engineer's report said, this is a dual zoned property. It's AREE two in the rear and it's twelve and a half acres. The areas in orange are the locations of current storage of dry material.
And how, and were those the same storage areas that were existence at the time that the, uh, you heard the, the Gutierrez bought the, uh, Garden Center?
It is.
And could you descri- in terms of this particular plan, um, could you, uh, tell the board what's in each direction around the property? So you said that there's an AREE portion of the property. Would you describe that area and show it to the?
Uh, the AREE, Marsh of Bog Brook is the, what bifurcates the property into the two zones. AREE zone is in the rear to the west of the Bog Brook and the SED is in the front, uh, fronting Squonkum Road in the east.
And what's, on the portion that's in the AREE zone, what's that used for?
Uh, right now it's Q farm assessed.
And what kind of farming occurs there?
Uh, raising of goats and, uh, livestock.
Is there any proposed change for that as a part of this plan?
There is not.
And the area that's going to be utilized, um, what is to the, uh, on, to each side of the property?
Uh, the states, the state owns this property, uh, that is, um, comes from the Oakland Water Treatment Plant. There's a raw water pipeline or, uh, there's a pipeline that runs underneath, um, this property and, uh, to the north of the property is all residential.
And then, um, in terms of, does Northeast Remsco operate on another property in the area?
Uh, yeah, twenty-six point oh one, which is right here is where our main headquarters for, uh, operations is.
And does Mr. Gutierrez own another property in the area?
There is. It, it's not an adjoining. Twenty-six point oh one is an adjoining through Marshes Bog Brook. Twenty point oh one, which is known as White Oak, is not an adjoining. It's another twenty acres, I believe, just south of the property.
Now, the part of the property that's the AREE zone, in the engineer's report, there was a question, I believe, as to whether or not there's access between the existing Northeast Remsco, uh, site and the AREE site.
They are adjoining, but there's no physical access. The Marsh Bog Brook has, uh, is a physical separation between the two.
And is there any fis- is there any way to get from the existing Northeast Remsco property to the proposed site?
Only, uh, over, uh, roads.
So you can't get there from one property to the other without going on the road?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Now, could you please describe for the board what is proposed in terms of the use of, of the property?
Uh, the proposed use is just gonna be storage of dry materials. We are a heavy highway contractor and we have, uh, what we call dry materials, um, precast barrier, pipe and the like. It's gonna be, uh, stored in here for, uh, for a time until we need it on our projects.
And you are familiar with A five, which was a letter from me outlining the materials to be stored? Uh, that was in response to a request from the board at the waiver hearing?
I am.
And are those the materials that are going to be, um, stored?
They are.
Okay. How many employees are there expected to be working at this site?
No permanent, uh, depending on when material is, uh, loaded out or loaded in, uh, anywhere from two to three.
How about the existing, the existing structures? Are there any changes for those structures?
There are not.
For the existing structures, that residential or what looks like a residential structure that's in the SED zone, what's the current u- is that being used as a residential, uh, structure?
You can't testify. You're not sworn.
Uh, not currently, no.
What, what would it be used as, as a result if, of this approval?
Uh, I believe that's where the only bathrooms are. So for the transient workers that would be there from time to time, unloading and loading material would probably be used for that.
So it's gonna be used in conjunction with this use?
Correct.
And it's not gonna be residential?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Um, how about, is there any proposal I can?
No.
And what would be the hours of operations at this site?
Daylight.
And, um, there was in, in one of the reports, there was concerns about emergency access and working out with, I think, the police department and the fire department, access to the site. Is that something that, uh, you work out?
Yeah, we can go to each of the departments and find out what kind of keyed access or remote access they would require for the site.
Is there any proposed paving?
No.
Any proposed new drainage structures?
No.
Uh, the areas where, that are outlined in orange, will those be the limits of the, of the storage?
Yes.
Um, are there any, um, what type of, of equipment will be utilized on this site?
Uh, just loaders and excavators again to load out or load in the material as required, depending on the weight.
And that, that equipment's gonna stay on site, correct?
Uh, no, it'll probably be located at our, at our, uh, operational headquarters, hundreds of feet away.
So are those vehicles gonna traverse the public road?
Uh, legally. The loaders have on highway tags and excavators would be taken by low boy.
And what type of material is, is topsoil?
Uh, no, it's a precast barrier, pipe, um, and the like for.
EGA asphalt?
No.
No?
No, no stone, no asphalt. Um, pretty much just concrete and steel.
Uh, if you look at, um, if you look at, uh, the list that was in my letter that's marked A five, um, just some of the things, for example, because for me, I see the list, but to translate it to someone who's not used to all the de- all the technical terms, when you see those plastic barriers, those orange plastic barriers, that's there, um, things of that nature. Um, there, there are no loose materials. For the most part, they are either used in construction or in the safety precautions around road construction.
Did you see the, uh, report from the Environmental Commission? Have you addressed those concerns?
We got the report from the Environmental Commission a long time ago.
I'll read it to you. The Environmental Commission would like to see a full listing of all the materials to be stored on the property and locations for each. We want to know whether there are dust management plans for the intended use, how a storm order addressed. Do any of the materials to be stored have any runoff into Marsh Bog Brook? A full environmental impact report should be provided. How long will the items be or materials be s- s- stored?
I thought, I thought the list that, when I sent the letter, I thought that was being provided to them too. Usually you get subsequent reports after you supply information. I didn't know they didn't get that information, so we certainly will provide.
Well, this was only, is dated April twelfth, so I don't know if you've addressed all these.
Well, when I sent it, in August, I sent in the last list of properties after I was here. And I thought that was, I thought when I sent that in, that would be distributed to them and that would be the answer to their questions. Um, none of the, none of these items, all these items are things. They're not stuff that's soluble in water. Um, they don't float. They don't go anywhere. They're just barriers, uh, and things of that nature. I thought, I, I'm sorry, I thought this, I thought when I sent that in, that goes to them.
Eileen, is that, is that the process that when the applicants?
Usually if they send in a package of information and plans and things, they go to everyone. In this case, it was a letter and it was listed as a checklist item fifty-eight as requested in Laura's menu, I mean, excuse me, memo. So we just sent it out to the boards and the professionals. We didn't send it to anyone else. But it really didn't require review.
Bless you.
Bless you. But I think that's something we have to address and we'll do that offline.
I think this one is pretty obvious though. I think the Environmental Commission was thinking that this was aggregate materials and silt fest, silt fence requirement type things and we're talking about solid structural elements. So I, I would be comfortable deferring to, to their letter. I'm pretty sure if they had that list of items, I don't think they would have generated those same concerns.
I, I don't think we have to be concerned about runoff.
I'm not suggesting that.
No, I know.
But when a board takes high weight in a, in another committee or commission's, uh, comments, so the chairman just read comments that were addressed because the Environmental Commission didn't know. So that's my point and we'll deal with that offline.
Right.
Yeah, if we're getting the materials at the review for the board hearings, there's no reason that that group couldn't have received it as well.
No, there. There were, um, a, a couple of things that were also raised in the report. We presently have, um, a fence along Route five twenty-four slash five forty-seven, whatever number it may be at that point, um, out towards, it's a split rail fence. Um, we would like to maintain that fence, um, um, because if we, the reason that fence is there is, has nothing to do with the operations. It's to keep tractor trailers from parking on the property. Um, so that's what, that, Laura had that comment in her report. Um, we'll take it out if the county makes us take it out. Um, but we'd like to leave it otherwise. We'd like to go to the county and see if we could maintain that.
What's our, what's our preference on the sidewalk issue? Chris, right?
I think the sidewalk is a county issue, isn't it? Oh, okay.
There's, there's no sidewalks all along this.
I don't think there's any sidewalk.
Yeah, there's no pedestrian traffic and there's no reason pedestrian traffic to be generated over there.
Just ask him. Got my answer.
And I don't have anything else unless the board has questions.
Laura, are you ca- okay engineering wise?
Yes, I am. I mean, really from an engineering perspective, this is really a simple application. It's really just for storage. Um, and I think the applicant has addressed the points, uh, in our letter. We had no technical issues.
So how does the resolution then get resolved in regards to, do we, do we put in the resolution the materials that they say they want to store there? Or we more along the lines, talk about the resolution?
Well, I think you have to bear in mind that storage in this area is permitted. So outdoor storage is permitted within the SED zone. So I, I don't know that our ordinance speaks to what's permitted or what's not. We have their testimony on record.
The only reason I say that, Ms. Newman, is the Environmental Commission didn't get a chance to look at the materials that are proposed to be stored, to be able to provide any comment for the board to weigh in on. But they did provide testimony that the materials to be stored are pretty non, I want to use the word of use.
Soluble.
Non-soluble. So if that's gonna be the case, then I think the board could make a, a reasonable judgment on their own. Otherwise, I think we have to have, uh, the Environmental Commission look at this.
Ms. Newman, do you have any, uh?
No, I, um, we specifically gave you this list anticipating it would be incorporated in the resolution.
Okay.
Okay.
So I was just, I was waiting for you to finish, but I was gonna say we have no objection to incorporate anything.
Could've cut me off anytime.
So are the materials that you're proposing, the majority of those are on site already?
Correct. Yes, because.
Yes.
Mr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Do you want the exhibit left here?
Do we have anything on the master plan to report?
Nothing. We started the meeting today.
Mr. Tannenhaus, do you have anything to add since the last meeting?
No, we have a meeting next week, so we'll have some more information.
Are there any other elements to the master plan that were funded for this year?
Counselor, is there any reason to go into executive session?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman.